Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 18th, 2017 Westminster City Council meeting, Vida meeting, Mr. Housing Authority meeting, anybody we missed, GID meeting, I think we got them all, all the meetings. Anyway, uh, thank you for coming tonight. As always, the American flags posted both in the front and rear of the room, so if you would, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, and one free world.
Ms. Parker, for the last time this year, take your role, please.
Atchison.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
To Canberra. Demont.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
Council, for the first item up on the agenda is the minutes of the December 11th, 2017 meeting, Ms. Sykes?
Uh, Mayor, I move that the city council adopt, oh, I'm sorry, I move that the city council approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2017 meeting as presented.
Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion secured, or accepted. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Digital Cities Award, Ms. Sykes, if you would.
No, I'm not. All right. So, um, first off, David, would you like to introduce your, uh, team?
I'll be twenty-three years, start with our, my name's Eric Gray, I'm a software engineer at the University of New York.
I'm Larry Garlick, I'm a computer software engineer at the University of New York.
I'm Ed West, I'm an IT system supervisor at the Department of Technology.
All right, so, um, there are a few tasks as city councilor that could make you feel like you're in a grand project, uh, but we're competitive. Um, a few are as enjoyable or making us proud, but we do have a little more to our IT. Um, it's a whole cities award in a very competitive process, and so throughout all of the United States, for cities that are our size, our city has consistently been in the top ten this year, uh, best in this, sixth place this year. Um, there has only been one year in the last fifty years, six years, but we did not win, and that was because we did not apply. So, um, the excellence of this team cannot be overstated. Um, I was fortunate enough enough to be with Gary and David to pick up the award in Charlotte, that I would like them to talk a little bit more about it, and how they can keep it, have it consistently.
Well, you know, it's exciting to be working with a city that has, uh, the city of Westminster, who has, uh, foundation of progress, and has a successful, successful government, uh, it's, uh, taking care of the risks, uh, the digital city, just like the New York City, uh, open government, transparency, open data, several of these organizations, uh, are trying to make us do, it's using social media, using social media, six cities, using this technology, most of the, the day-to-day services, uh, it is collaborative services, uh, for people, organizations, it's a very, it's a very attractive, uh, it's, 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 uh,
But we know for these two projects, if we're able to get a waiver of use tax demands from the city, it gives us about another $350,000 of money that we can spend to make further improvements for the benefit of our kids. So we would urge you to thoughtfully consider that issue, and if you can say no to use tax or an exemption from that, or a waiver, that will be very much appreciated on our side so we can invest those dollars in meeting other extensive needs. With that, thank you very much for your time and attention, and if we can answer any questions you might have about this use tax request from the city.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anyone else who has any items that they'd like to bring to City Council at this time? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is report of city officials. Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. I want to, first of all, congratulate the IT Department. I was also able to be there when that award was given. It was quite an honor, and they're an outstanding group of professionals, and we thank you for being here this evening to represent your full team. We have quite a number of post-meetings this evening. We'll have a Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting following this meeting. These meetings will happen in the council boardroom. The Westminster Housing Authority will meet following this meeting in the chambers, and we have a meeting of the Westminster Station General Improvement District that'll also be happening post-meeting. There are a couple of post-meeting items that we'll also have on the agenda tonight, so thank you for this rather busy last meeting of the year. Just a couple of things I'd like to highlight that, if you don't mind me taking a moment or so, I'm really proud of our Public Works Utilities Department and their initiation of a Landscape and Water Management Scholarship. They've awarded that scholarship recently, which is going to be a $1,500 annual scholarship to students in our community, and it's a real effort, I think, to connect our water utility with the education and pipelining of future potential professionals in public works, and also just to reach out to the city. I want to also let the public know, as we've reported to you, Council, that beginning, the first of the year, we'll start a cultural arts and historic strategic planning process. Your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department will be back in front of you the first quarter of this year with an update of that. You have a report from me yesterday, I guess today, a series of bullets that talk about the efforts that we intend to study as part of this research, and we look for your participation and participation of the community moving forward. I mention it here because it was initiated by comments, councilors, you've had about this effort and our need to make sure we bring cultural arts and historic preservation along with all the other great work that you're doing. And finally, I guess two more things. I'll leave the best for last. In our Community Development Department, we are celebrating a one-year anniversary of implementation of our permitting and review process and enhancements to that process called Trackett. Over the past 12 months, staff has implemented significant process improvements and will continue to implement changes that benefits customers, applicants, and folks who come to the city needing our building permits. It doesn't seem like a big deal unless you need that building permit, and I get calls from people about once a week who are in that pipeline and needing help, and they have been very complimentary over the last year. Just a little gee whiz fact, we've processed 6,470 permits that are a part of 577 planning projects through Trackett. And no, that's not over the last 10 years, that's over the last year. So I'm really proud of the efforts and appreciate council support in purchasing that new Trackett system to enhance our response to customers and to keep our economy moving. And finally, our Parks, Rec, and Libraries Department learned over the course of this last weekend that they'll be receiving a grant from Greater Outdoors Colorado for the construction of Westminster Station Park and related programs. That grant is going to be $1.4 million, a big amount of money that's going to be available for us to help with the capital construction of that park along Little Dry Creek in southwest Westminster, but more importantly, to put some youth to work and provide some environmental education for kids in our Westminster School District in our historic part of our city. So congratulations to the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department for bringing home the bacon. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, are there any comments or reports you'd like to make at this time? Ms. Bird?
Well, first, I'm going to say quickly, thank you so much to our superintendent, Chris Gdowski, for coming out and saying a few words to us this evening. I don't think people are aware of the challenges that all of our public schools have been operating under, mostly since the Great Recession. I think before that, our state's public schools had serious budget challenges, but since that time, and I'm not going to get my numbers exactly correct, but as a result of state budget cuts, our schools within the state of Colorado are over $5 billion underfunded. And notwithstanding that funding deficit, we've all had the benefit of hearing so many of the successes that our public schools have been able to achieve, notwithstanding that funding deficit. So never doubt what a committed community can do. We can come and rally our voters to approve some new capital funds and now use that to grow and expand some classrooms, make some critical infrastructure improvements so that kids can be safe and healthy in their classrooms. So thank you for all that you have done to stretch every dollar that the voters have approved for you. I couldn't be prouder of the work that you do for our kids and very grateful. So before you stepped out this evening, I did want to pass that on to you. So tremendous asset to our community. Thank you. Yes. Another point I wanted to make, we care about our kids and we care about roofs over their heads. And with that in mind, I wanted to let everybody know tomorrow, we have a ground breaking for our Eaton Street Affordable Housing Project. Most of you in this room are staff, but for anyone who might be listening, this is going to be a 118-unit development that will wrap our parking garage at our new downtown. So when you come to our downtown, you won't see a parking garage, you'll see a beautiful housing development with ground floor retail, and that's 118 more individuals and families who are making 60% or less of the area median income, and that's about $50,000 a year for a family of four who will be able to afford a place to live in our great city. So I've said this before many times, a roof over your head enables so many other things for people, stable employment, stable maintenance of health care, and ability to become meaningful contributors and participants in our community and our economy. So I'm very excited. This is definitely the city turning its strategic plan into a reality and listening to our citizens when you tell us that the cost of living in Westminster is too high. So we listen to you, we care about it, and we're doing something about it. So if you're free around 4 o'clock, is that open to the public?
Yes.
I think it is, so you should come and join us. It will be very exciting. So I hope to see you there, and thank you for joining us this evening. Happy holidays in advance because we won't see you until after the New Year.
Any other member of council have any comments at this time? Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for being here. I'll try to be brief, but this is our last meeting of the year, and it's impossible to not come here and reflect on all of the work that we have done as a team in Westminster, and it has been an incredibly busy and productive year. So I just wanted to take a few moments to think about all of the highlights, and one of the biggest issues, I think Superintendent Gdowski hit on, is the amount of regional collaboration that we have been able to accomplish this year to better all of our partners and to the more, most importantly, the residents that live here in Westminster. So whether it's urban drainage, whether it's our school districts, Adams County, Jefferson County, staff has looked for ways that we can make sure that we're assisting each other in our mutual needs. Mobility has been a great year for Westminster. We just recently won a Complete Streets Award. We had our Mobility Access Plan. We had two wonderful new hires that have really just helped Westminster come on board. Our Westminster Station won multiple awards. They won from the American Public Works Association, the 2017 Project of the Year, which is phenomenal, and also the 2017 Excellence in Engineering Award for our drainage portion of it. We got to see our downtown site have private investment start to go vertical. So I, we've done so much on affordable housing. We have our Affordable Housing Study has been completed, and we have multiple projects that are actively, one almost completing and a new one starting. We have a Chief Sustainability Officer. So I guess I am looking back with a lot of, I guess, pride in the work that we've done, and I am looking forward with a lot of hope at what we can accomplish if we continue to work together. I want to say again, welcome to the new councilors. I look forward to working with you in 2018 and hope we can just keep our foot on the gas.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Gdowski, I know you're within shouting range, but I would remind you that the credit for the comments about the internet and having to put the coats on belongs to that fifth grader who made it before you and I got up, so we have to go back to them, and hopefully that same group will be talking, not that same group, but the same group likely will be at the groundbreaking tomorrow. Yeah. Anyway, the kids were, did a great program this morning. It's amazing how much fifth graders can pick up on things like, "I don't like having to put my coat on to go to the bathroom," or "You really need to fix the internet because it's really bad out in the modular buildings, and can we get some help?" But I think one of the things that Shannon alluded to is the residents, the PTOs, the teachers, and the kids, they got together and they worked, and they convinced the public in Adams 12 to vote on the mill levy override to get the bond money they needed. Now, if we can be that successful and get our parents and our students and stuff together in Westminster Public Schools and Jefferson County Public Schools, maybe we can do some of the same thing over there. But it's still a challenge for everybody to think about, well, my kids graduated, I don't really need to help pay for the schools anymore. You really do. It's the kids that are going to be running these cities, the workers you're going to hire, those are the kids that are still in those schools that still need a good quality education. So in 2018, we don't know what the school district's going to do yet, it's still down the road a ways, but hopefully if they do decide to go for those that haven't had one recently, we can get everybody to get behind them and try to get some of the same results we're seeing in Adams 12. As Ms. Sykes indicated, this is our last meeting for the year. We have had a very bountiful year, more new businesses coming in, a lot of conversation of people who are still looking to come here, a lot of growth that is being challenging to the entire metro area, but I think Westminster is on the forefront of having our comprehensive land use plan, helping to guide us, that we're looking not for quantity but quality of what we're bringing in, and that every project that it looks at is looked at individually as what do we need to do? Is this the right project for us? And sometimes we're saying no, and that's okay, because not every project is meant for Westminster, and we're doing, I think, an excellent job with the staff review. Phase two of the downtown will start to see a lot of activity in next year, but we have several groundbreakings, one being tomorrow, and several that are coming up after the first of the year, that we'll start to see a lot more things going vertical at the new downtown as well as the TOD station with more redevelopment down there, starting at the old Mill and RV, a lot of activities down there, and just a lot of new small business. If you're along 73rd and Bradburg, there's a new coffee shop next to the Greens called It's Going to, that is open, the soft opening. If you're interested in model trains, there's a train store that's been opened just recently. So there's a lot of new activity throughout the city regardless of where you're at, and to Don Tripp, the staff, a happy holiday and a great New Year to all of you, and thank you for being part of the city of Westminster. Moving on, the next item on the agenda will be the Consent Agenda. This is a set of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and a vote. We have confirmed with the council at the prior meeting, there is no item to be removed, so at this time, Ms. Bird?
I move that the City Council adopt the Consent Agenda, items 8A through 8D.
Is there a second, Ms. Pinter?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote with your button. There we go, that's there. Okay, motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up on the agenda is Resolution Number 31, reappointing members of the various boards and commissions. And Ms. Pinter, you're up.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number 31, reappointing regular and alternate members to the boards and commissions whose terms of office expire on December 31, 2017, to an additional two-year term, and appointing alternates to full membership for two-year terms on the Inclusivity Board, the Personnel Board, and the Special Permits and License Board respectively.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Pinter?
I just want to take a moment and thank everyone who serves on our boards and commissions. We have a number of boards and commissions and task forces that come up from time to time. They require a lot of study and a lot, and they are uncompensated, and it's a lot of hard work, and we trust these boards and commissions with a great deal of responsibility, and they work very hard on behalf of our city, and I'm very grateful. I just want to thank everyone for their service.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Atchison.
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item on the agenda will be the Item 10A. This is, uh... Move to National Association of State Procurement Offices, this is a purchase item for computers and services. Ms. Sykes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to find that the National Association of State Procurement Officials pricing meets the city charter bidding requirements and authorize staff to proceed with 2018 calendar year purchases of laptop and desktop PCs, storage hardware, computer servers, printers, and software from Apple, Microsoft, Dell, HP, Lenovo, Ram Computer Supply, and SHI Corporations in an amount not to exceed $670,500.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Bird, did you have a comment?
I do, I have a question. So I'm wondering if staff can talk to us about how all of the various products interface and whether it would be less expensive to purchase products from fewer companies?
Thank you, Councilor Bird. First of all, in terms of the selection and integration of technology, the city staff and IT are very strategic about how we go about selecting new products. We have a list of approved and supported technologies. Part of the criteria for that, we look at the cost, we look at reliability, we look at usability, we look at integration, which goes to your question about tying all those different technologies together. So integration is really critical for us. While you see items like Apple on that list, we do use Apple iPads, but we don't use the Apple Desktop just for that same reason, because of that integration challenge. So those are some of the criteria. In terms of the purchasing, we purchase through multiple vendors, but all of those vendors provide us with pricing that either meets or exceeds in terms of benefit for the organization, those pricings that are done through cooperative purchasing arrangements, so they are on a bid sheet, and we are able to achieve very good discounts on those products.
Any other questions, council? Okay, this is a button vote, please use your buttons. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item on the agenda is Item 10B. This is Intergovernmental Service Agreement with the City of Westminster. And Ms. Bird, you're up again.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental service agreement with the City of Westminster, Westminster Station General Improvement District in substantially the same form as the agreement presented regarding the payment of a service fee to the city.
Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any comment or questions from council on 10B? Seeing none, this is again a vote with your buttons, please. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is 10C, Westminster Municipal Parking Structure Maintenance and Operating Contract. A motion from a member of council, Ms. Bird?
I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to find that the public interest will be best served by amending the existing contract with SP Plus Corporation for the maintenance and operation of the Westminster Municipal Parking Structures, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with SP Plus Corporation in the amount of $246,294, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $49,266 for a total authorized expenditure with this firm not to exceed $295,560 in 2018, with an option for a one-year renewal in 2019 in the amount of $246,294, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $49,266 for a total authorized expenditure with this firm in 2019 if renewed not to exceed $295,560, plus the annual percentage change of the Denver Boulder Greeley Consumer Price Index, subject to annual appropriation and contractor performance.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from any member of council on Item 10C? Ms. Bird?
So I just would like to ask about the snow removal expense, whether the fee that's been built in is a variable, will be variably charged, or whether this is a flat fee, rather, that we're paying in advance?
The fee for snow removal will be per occurrence, so it'll be, it's not, it's not a flat.
So we're not necessarily spending all of the money allocated for this? It'll just be as we need it?
Yes, it'll be dependent on weather and snow conditions, yes.
Other questions by council? This is a button vote, if you would, please. Again, the motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item on the agenda is Item Counselor's Bill Number 45 on first reading. Ms. Pinter, yours?
Yes, move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 45 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with Trimble Inc. that would include sixty, let me get that right, 6% rebates of building permit fees, use taxes on construction materials, and sales and, it is 60. Jeez.
I'd like you to read it again.
I'm going to read it again. I tricked myself. Move pass Counselor's Bill Number 45 on first reading, authorizing the manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with Trimble Inc. that would include 60% rebates of building permit fees and use taxes on construction materials, and sales and use taxes on expenditures for furniture, fixtures, and equipment for five years with assistance capped at $737,639.
Mr. Demont?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. As this is an item that we have already had a discussion with and previously allowed Ms. Bird to remove herself from this, she will be declining to participate in this particular vote, so therefore she will be excused. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Bird abstains. Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes. Motion carries on a 5-4, one abstention and no members of the council in objection. Next item is going to be Resolution Number 32. Ms. Sykes?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 32, authorizing the city manager to sign the Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for the Big Dry Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project Improvements.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions from council? Ms. Bird?
I just wonder, on this, can staff let us know where, with the increased amounts that are being requested in this amendment, were those foreseen? And I guess that, I'll have the same question for the next item as well.
Yes, for both items, they were foreseen and budgeted. This is part of the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District's process as we go through the planning, design, and construction of a project. They will amend the IGA to include additional funds into the project, foreseen funds. So this IGA, you'll see additional amendments as we get further into design and then construction. And just as a reference, we have, for the Big Dry Creek stabilizations, we have a total budget of $1,250,000 spread out through our five-year CIP.
That money gets expended as we amend the IGA going forward in increments?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution Number 32? Seeing none, again, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item is Resolution Number 33. Ms. Scully?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 33, authorizing the city manager to sign the Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for the South Highlands Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project Improvements.
Okay, Ms. Bird?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions regarding Resolution Number 33? Seeing none, this is again a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is Resolution Number 34. Mr. Demont?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 34, authorizing the city manager to formalize Westminster's participation in the Colorado Firefighter Cancer Benefits Trust.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 34. Is there any comments or questions by staff or council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Ladies and gentlemen, I hate to bring it to your attention, but that is the end of the Westminster City Council meeting tonight and for 2017. However, you're not done. You are now going to adjourn and reconvene as the Westminster Station GID Board of Directors.
Look at them all go home.
Yeah, I don't blame them. Everybody but Joe.
There's only three more public meetings. Come on, where are you going?
Next item on the agenda will be the Westminster Station GID will call this meeting of the Board of Directors to convene, and then we will move to Item 2A. This is the Board of Meetings of August 28, 2017, and we will look to see whoever would like to make the motion to curve the minutes. Ms. Sykes?
I move that the board approve the minutes of the August 28, 2017, meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. First item of business will be the move to adopt Resolution Number 2. Ms. Scully?
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, you're not Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2 outlining the executive director's authority to enter into the contracts and make purchases on behalf of the City of Westminster, Westminster Station General Improvement District, and to delegate these activities to appointed City of Westminster staff in a manner consistent with practices established by the city under the Westminster Municipal Code, as it may be amended from time to time at all current and future administrative memoranda.
Ms. Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution Number 2. Is there any comments or questions from any member of the board? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item on the agenda for this board is Item 2B, authorization for the executive director to execute intergovernmental agreements. Ms. Bird?
I move to authorize the executive director to execute an intergovernmental service agreement with the City of Westminster in substantially the same form as the agreement presented regarding the payment of a service fee to the city.
Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions from any member of the board on regards to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote with your lights. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. For this, the General Improvement District, we are now adjourned, and we are reconvene as the Westminster Housing Authority Meeting for 2017. And our last... And I will ask the members of the board to please move the motion to accept the minutes. Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I move the board approve the minutes of the June 12, 2017 meeting as presented.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any question from any member of the board? If not, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. First item of business for the Housing Authority is Item 3A. This is adoption of Resolution Number 68. Mr. Demott?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution Number 68, approving the 2018 Westminster Housing Authority budget.
And Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any question from any member of the board? Hearing none, there is, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Seitz?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Motion is carried on a six-o vote. There being no other business between the High Election Authority, we are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, we are done with all business, with the exception, we have a couple of executive sessions, one to finish and another one to go through to completion of. So, we will give you about a five-minute break, and then ask everyone to meet back in the room, and we'll try to get through the rest of the business.